Thank you for attending tonight's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. The agenda will be displayed on the screen in the front of the room. You may also follow along by connecting to our website. It's www.wcsoh.org. Click on the district link and then select Board of Education and the Board Docs Agenda for tonight's meeting. There will be two opportunities to address the board tonight. The first being Agenda Item 6.01, the first set of public comments is always relative to Agenda Items. And tonight, those Agenda Items are 7.01 through 11.03. Please state the Agenda Item that you're referring to at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity will be Agenda Item 12.01. There is a sign-up sheet located at the back of the room on a table. And each speaker will have five minutes to address the board and a timer will be shown on the screen when you do that. And with that, Ms. Marshall, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Bell?
Present.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Here.
Mr. Velarde?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Ms. Cotter?
Here. Okay, if anyone would like to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is 4.01, proving the minutes as read of the regular session held by the Board of Education on Monday, November 19, 2018, and the special session held on Monday, December 3, 2018. We don't actually vote on minutes, but does the board have any comments or questions about the minutes as presented?
No.
No.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 5.01, I see there's no, nothing to cover there. And then Agenda Item 6.01, it looks as though no one has signed up for public comments for that Agenda Item. Moving on to Agenda Item 7.01, resolution of intent to participate in the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission Expedited Local Partnership Program. Do we have anyone?
So moved.
Can we have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Do you, do you think you should read that? Do you think that would be helpful to be read?
The whole thing? I thought we were going to have someone present on it now.
Say that again?
I can, I can talk about it.
Do you mind?
Yeah, and I'm happy to read the resolution if you'd like for me to.
If you wouldn't mind, I just, it's, just to get it on the record.
Sure. I think that's a great idea.
She'll read it and then speak a little, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Do you want me to read it because I have it up?
I can pull it up. Maybe.
There it is.
Maybe. No, it's not coming, it's not.
I can just read it.
All right. So this is the resolution of intent to participate in the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission Expedited Local Partnership Program, whereas the Board of Education of the Westerville City School District of Franklin Delaware Counties met in session on December 5 and adopted the following resolution, and whereas the school district intends to participate in the expedited local partnership program as outlined in House, in Senate Bill 272. And whereas the school district is planning to expend local resources to achieve a separate and distinct part of an overall master facilities plan of the school district's facilities needs as prepared in conjunction with the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, that is either new construction or major repairs. And whereas the school board, the school district board intends to move forward with a ballot issued or apply other local resources in November of 2019, and acknowledges this date may not be sooner than 12 months following the date of this resolution. And whereas the school district has been working with the commission since January of 2017 and wishes to participate in the program, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Westerville City School District in Franklin and Delaware Counties in Ohio, that the school district declares its intention to participate in the expedited local partnership program. I do, will have one correction I would, for this, that we add estimated in November of 2019, because right now the board has not made a decision for a date for a ballot issue, and that is an estimated date. Dr. Kellogg and I and several other administrators with the executive leadership team, including Jeff LaRose, met with the Ohio Facilities Construction Committee, Commission on November 30th to talk about this program. They did tell us that it doesn't matter when we're on the ballot, it makes no difference to them for the program. This doesn't bind us to anything, it just gives us the opportunity to receive a credit on future projects that we may have. We have 66 districts in front of us for funding with the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, and they estimate that it will be about six years before we would see any funding from them. So this gives us the opportunity to possibly build up some credit that might apply towards a future project. And they call it the discrete portion policy. And it has to, it would only apply to things such as like a new building, a sizable addition, or an overall renovation of a building, and the project has to be more than $1 million in scope. I think it's a good opportunity for the school district just to be in the hopper for that. So I'm recommending that we go through that application process.
So, since we moved the resolution, then do you want a motion to amend? So we would, we would be amending the first sentence to include Franklin and Delaware Counties, Ohio.
Right.
And then we would be amending 1, 2, 3, 4, the fourth whereas, to say, the school district board intends to move forward with a ballot issue or apply other local resources. You said estimated, and we could say in November of 2019 or later, whichever makes sense. So is that what you, I think that would be most appropriate if we did an amendment?
Yeah, probably, yeah.
So I'll offer, since I moved it, I'll offer an amendment, okay? So the amendment is to change the first sentence to read Franklin and Delaware Counties, And in the fourth paragraph to say, whereas the school district board intends to move forward with a ballot issue or apply other local resources in November of 2019 or later.
Okay.
And so that's a motion?
That's a motion to amend.
Motion to amend, and I'll second that, a motion to amend.
Can you call the roll on the amendment?
Correct. Sorry.
Are we ready? Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes. And then call the roll on the original resolution.
On the resolution itself.
As amended.
Okay, Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Items 8.01 through 8.09, Dr. Hopkins? Can I please have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Good evening, President Cotter, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg. I'd like to present to you for your consideration the Personnel Consent Agenda. Some of the highlights included in this consent agenda are as follows. We have two retirements, six resignations from various classified and classified substitute positions, the employment of 10 individuals in various classified and classified substitute positions, also one contractual status change for a classified administrator, and the employment of one teacher, and the employment of individuals in a number of supplemental contract and classified pupil activity programs. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? I think you have someone to maybe introduce.
Yes, would you like for me to introduce them now or after? Okay, I'd be happy to introduce them right now. It's my honor to introduce in the back here, we have Mr. Bob Letario. He will be assuming the position of manager in maintenance services. Bob has been working in Westerville schools for about eight years, since 2011, and we're very excited that he has accepted this leadership position and brings with him a wealth of experience. I've just learned quite a bit about the myriad of experiences that he's going to bring to Westerville City Schools, so we are very excited to have him join the leadership post in this district.
Thanks, congratulations, welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you for being here.
Any other questions? Nope. Okay, thank you. Can you please call the roll?
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes. Okay, moving on to old business, Agenda Item 9.01. Can we, yeah, can, maybe we should group all of these? Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Can I have a motion in a second to approve Agenda Items 9.01 through 9.06?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 10.01, new business. First reading policy 1422 nondiscrimination and equal opportunity, equal employment opportunity. Dr. Hopkins?
President Cotter, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, if it's okay with you, if I can group these together in groups of three to move through them because they are very, very similar, so with respect to 10.01, 02, and 03, the revisions are focusing on nondiscrimination and equal employment opportunity in an effort to fully comply with the OCR recommendations. We've added more specific language at the end of each of these three policies under the retention of investigatory records and materials to more clearly delineate the processes and protocols for maintaining district records. And we've also added a sentence that allows the compliance officer to consult legal counsel during investigations.
Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, the next group?
Right, the next group of three related to 10.04, 05, and 10.06 are related to the termination and resignation policy in our board policy. And what we'd like to do is recommend language to be inserted to emphasize the requirement for employees to have a, to have and maintain a current license for their position of employment.
Any questions? Okay.
Moving right along to 10.07, 08, and 09, these policy revisions focus on the anti-harassment policy in an effort to fully comply with federal OCR recommendations. We've added more specific language again at the end of these three policies under the retention of investigatory records and materials to more clearly delineate the processes and protocols for maintaining district records.
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm glad to be back. 10.10 is related to, the final policy here is related to, relating to the mandatory reporting of misconduct by licensed employees. This addition to the recommendation requires the superintendent to report incidents of misconduct to other state professional boards in addition to the Ohio Department of Education for employees who require an additional, an additional license or certification. This primarily impacts district employees such as school nurses, audiologists, social workers, and the like, that in addition to the State Board of Education, the superintendent or designee would be required to report to that governing board as well.
Okay. And 10.11, you two?
I think I'm finished.
No? Okay, thank you. Moving on to 10.11, Mr. Dorn?
Good evening, President Cotter, Vice President Davidson, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, Mrs. Marshall. Tonight you have a revision to Policy 4162 Drug and Alcohol Testing of CDL license holders and other employees who perform safety-sensitive functions in front of you. The revision to the policy reflects the latest rule changes by the U.S. Department of Transportation. These revisions have been cited in recent Department of Transportation audits of districts in several regions. Primarily, the revisions are related to the identification of specific educational materials and details that they must contain, that must be provided to employees, and also to identify the administrative personnel responsible for providing those materials. The policy further spells out the return-to-duty provisions for employees who may be removed from performing safety-sensitive functions as a result of this policy. Effectively, this policy revision provides more clarity for the employee. It is recommended that the board adopt the policy as it reflects the current state of federal regulations and should be adopted to maintain accurate policies.
Any questions? No? Okay, thank you, Mr. Dorn. And our last item of new business, first reading for computer-integrated manufacturing course of study.
Good evening, President Cotter, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg. I'm excited to be here this evening to share with you our recommendation to add computer-integrated manufacturing, or SIM, as our fourth engineering course as part of our engineering pathway at all three high schools. SIM will be a science elective course that will follow our introduction to engineering design and principles of engineering course. We also have offered this year civil engineering and architecture, and SIM and CEA, civil engineering, are both electives that students can take after taking those foundational engineering courses. In this course, students are going to learn about manufacturing processes, product design, robotics, and automation. They are going to develop their knowledge and skills of computer-aided design in manufacturing using a CNC mill. We are excited to be, or we want to offer this course because it is a hands-on course, and we've worked with our advisory board as well as our team of engineering instructors to research different options for this fourth course. We've been able to visit a program in Pickerington as they were launching this course and speak with a couple of other teachers, and we've heard nothing but positive feedback about how hands-on it is, how engaging it is for students, and what opportunities there are to maybe connect with engineers around this course. Do you have any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, a couple of things here. I, I'm looking, I'm looking at the bottom, the fiscal impact.
Yes.
So it looks like North has some of the equipment but is missing another piece?
Yes.
What is that?
So there is startup equipment required for the course. At the end of the course, the final project is students putting together basically an automated line, and they need to use robotics arms, robotic pieces, and then the mill. And so right now, Westerville North has a mill available, the other two schools do not. And then the other pieces would be the robotics VEX kits and a robotic arm for each team of students.
Okay. And then, can you tell us a little bit about the cult, the relationships with business partners?
Yep, we are continuing to develop those. We do have an advisory committee that meets, right now we're working on three times a year, up to quarterly, with our engineering instructors so that we can talk and share about our curriculum and what our students are doing, and making sure that what we're teaching is connected to what skills and opportunities there are for students in the field. We are still building our advisory committee, so if you know of any engineers that are interested in working with us, we always are taking names. We've worked with post-secondary partners, including Otterbine and Columbus State, and really trying to give our students the opportunity to, to understand engineering technologies versus engineering, because there are two very different pathways within that field. One is more hands-on and technical, where the other might be in an office, working on a computer, more theory-based. And then our community partners, we've had Edge Things, which operates out of the point, join us several times. ABB here in Westerville has joined us, and we're working on cultivating that relationship. So we're very excited to make sure that we have folks at the table in the field to help us really connect with what we're doing in the classroom with what students need to know when they leave us.
So do, do we partner then with the point or just the businesses within the point?
We have had the point at the table when we're planning, so Aaron Bender, their executive director, has attended our planning sessions, and I think now that we've shored up what the content is and what classes we're going to offer, the next step is then how are we connecting our students more with those opportunities, including the point? So we've had an initial relationship, and now it's time to start building that.
And then, as far as I notice, staff members at each school, and then the amount of kids participating, it's less at South. Is there a correlation to FTE and the kids participating, or is it just that the kids haven't signed up for it?
It's based on course requests and how many students are registering for the courses. So each high school right now has both foundational classes, IED and POE. The third course, which is the first year that we offered this course, the civil engineering architecture, there weren't enough students at South to operate that course.
Got it.
And those students, if they're interested, were able to take it at another building where it was offered because there were enough students. So really, it is based on student registration.
Okay. Okay. I think that's it.
Just real quickly, I think I understand. Does this, does this fill out our engineering pathway?
It does. So it's part of our career-
I don't want to say complete, but it kind of, it kind of does, right?
It does. It meets our career tech requirement to, to have four courses.
Okay. And if, the one we approved last year, commuter-
CEA, civil engineering architecture.
Let's just go with that. CEA, this is C-I-
M.
M-O-U-S-E is what comes to my mind, but these last two have to be preceded by the first two courses, IED and POE.
We do ask students to complete IED and POE before enrolling. They don't say have to. We, we try to advise students based on their background because we want them to be successful.
Sure.
And a lot of the work that they're doing in SIM and civil engineering is building on what they're starting in IED and POE. There's opportunities, though, if a student's jumping in as a senior and there's a, they really want CEA, we'll work with them, advise them on what's going to be expected, and see if that's a good fit for them.
Okay. That, that was what I was curious about. If a student was late to the game and came in as a junior or a senior and said, you know, I, I kind of am interested in that now, I didn't, we would work with them and see if that was appropriate.
And we do that in our health pathway as well. So we really try to find a best fit for a student. Oftentimes, with IED, you're learning the AutoCAD program, and you're getting a strong foundation in that, Autodesk Inventor, doing 3D modeling, because you really jump into that and go beyond. In civil engineering, with a new program called Revit, which is also Autodesk program, and then in SIM, you'll be using that program too.
And the only other question I have, I don't know how to ask it, is, is there a, is there an advocate in each building for the pathways, like somebody that is saying, I'm, I'm disappointed in seeing some of the schools having much lower numbers than I thought. I mean, it's new, it's coming out, and that's fine, I, I'm not worried about that. Is there a, is there an advocacy process for students to at least consider these courses?
Something we, that's a focus this year is recruitment, and how are we helping students and families understand all of the opportunities, because there are so many opportunities, and sometimes it's overwhelming about, you have the pathways, you have college credit plus, there's lots of really neat opportunities for students in high school right now, and we are, are focused as school counselors, as classroom instructors within the pathway, in sharing our information with students and families so that they understand their opportunities and find a good fit. So I know this year I'm working with our eighth grade counselors and high school counselors on how do we personalize the scheduling experience for our eighth graders.
Yep.
And then looking at, we have now flyers about each of our pathways that we're able to share at parent evenings and online, so that is something we're paying attention to. I'm also paying attention to how many young ladies are in our engineering program and how many young men are in our health pathways program too, because we also see some disconnect there too.
Good, that's, really, that's a great answer. I was just listening on the way here to an NPR segment on health pathways and, and the diminishing numbers of, of people in some of the health pathways, so thank you for that. I just, I, I appreciated your first comment. I, I have two kids in the schools, and I, who have been on the board for a while, I still have a hard time, I'm, I say to them, it, there's so much out there. And then they get overwhelmed, and I get, I say, well, you know, okay, just take math and English. I, you know, you just kind of give in, because there's so much good stuff out there, and I appreciate you starting in the middle school years. I mean, that's just, there, I, I, we have a ton of really good stuff in the high school years.
We do. And we, I also want to put a plug in for our high school academic information night and activity fair too on January 30th. Each of our high schools, we're having a night where families, rising freshmen as well as current high school students can come and find out more about the scheduling opportunities that they have. So I highly recommend that, and you'll start to see advertising about that coming out soon.
Thank you.
I have one more question, I'm so sorry. So I'm thinking about timeline, so we need a mill, correct?
Yes.
Like this machinery, do we have a spot at Central for that? Like a designated?
It actually is a tabletop mill, so it would fit actually like on a table.
Okay.
If you talk to Mr. Scarf, he has a perfect place for it.
Good.
And then South too right now has space in the room that they're currently teaching their engineering courses, there would be a spot for it as well.
So this could be happening at all three of our high schools next year?
If we had registration-
Right.
-to warrant it.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So will you, I'll, I'll wait on that one.
Any other questions?
No questions, just a comment, I'm very glad to see this tonight. There's been a lot of effort put into this, a lot of time, a lot of thought. I really so much appreciate the expansion of opportunity that we've seen at the high school over the past several years. It is exciting to see, even if it can be overwhelming at times. And as I look at 15 sections and 339 students enrolled, that's very exciting to me as we look at the relative youth of the pathway itself. So I'm, I'm basically saying kudos to you and to all who've been involved in putting this together and in fleshing out the entirety of the engineering pathway. Thank you.
We have amazing instructors-
Yes, we do.
-that really, they make this pathway happen.
Yes.
So we're very fortunate to have some top-notch folks that are teaching these classes.
Thank you so much. I think it's a really good opportunity for our students. Thanks for all your work.
Thank you. We appreciate your support.
Okay, thanks. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 11.01, I'd like to entertain nominations for the appointment of president pro tempore.
Yeah, let's, I'd like, go.
Go ahead, make a motion.
I'd like to consider approval of, nominate President Cotter to be pro tempore, just to continue her reign.
Trying to hang on.
For January on, for next, for what she said.
At our organizational meeting.
That's my motion, what she said.
Second that, yes.
Okay. Any discussion?
We have to do this at the organizational meeting. We have to appoint a president pro tem, and we do it now so that it's all set up for when we come back for our organizational meeting in January.
And next year, they won't let me butcher it like I just did, so just to let you know.
Thank you for explaining that. Could you please call the roll?
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson? Yes.
Yes. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 11.02, can I please have a motion in a second to approve the donations?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just so very thankful.
Yes, we're all very thankful, generous donations. Can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 11.03, I'd like to entertain a motion in a second to approve, to appoint Nathan Erickson to the Library Board of Trustees of the Westerville Public Library, beginning January 1st, 2019, and expiring December 31st, December 31st, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Can you please call the role?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 12.01, public comment. I see that nobody has signed up for public comment. And then, moving on to Agenda Item 13.01, board comments. Does anyone on the board have comments?
I just have one quick question. I was just wondering if we had clarification on the number of Westerville kids that head start?
The overall number or the Westerville?
Yeah.
The clarification of the number we got, when that, that resided in Westerville, or whether that, did, Mr. Dorn, did they follow back up with us on that one? They haven't followed back up yet?
I did, I did place a couple of calls today, and all of the, and Blackville area, I guess, 65, 65, I believe he met, or enrolled in, would be enrolled in a school, but that's not how it came out.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you. Any other board comments? Thoughts?
None.
Okay, well, then I would just like to-
Wait, what?
I'm sorry, did you have board comments?
Comments? I have much to say.
Okay, sorry.
It's our last meeting.
Oh, let's settle back.
I'll get comfortable.
I would like to thank, I saw it, I would like to thank President Cotter for leading us this year astutely, solidly. Give me some words here.
Enthusiastically.
Enthusiastically, no, thank you to President Cotter.
Effectively.
Effectively. Is it her first time doing it? With strength and-
And composure. Ethically, with great integrity.
Okay, that's it.
Hey, keep going.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I think you're awesome, you did a great job.
Oh, I didn't say awesome, Dora.
Thanks. I'm not seeking any other compliments, but thank you to my fellow board members, I've really enjoyed this year. Working with the executive team and the rest of the staff has been a great year for me. I feel very thankful.
Congratulations.
And I wish everyone a happy holiday season and a happy new year. We will see you in the new year. Can I please, oh, I should talk about the next meeting first. I should point out that we had a change in schedule. The next board meeting will meet on Monday, January 14th, 2019, for our wonderful organizational meeting, and that will be at 6:00 PM here at the Early Learning Center. And then, I am happy to entertain a motion and a second for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Can you please call the role?
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes, thank you, we are adjourned.
Two down.